Got the countdown going. All right. Good evening, everyone, and I hope you enjoyed a little bit of moisture out there. And we appreciate you being with us today. Today's Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, and this is the regular session of the Coconino County Board of Supervisors, and we have almost a full house. It's great so many people came out to be here with us. We really appreciate it. It's going to be a big day today. We finally are going to take a look at that comprehensive plan that we've been working on for so long, and really appreciate all of you that are with us this evening. My name is Patrice Horstman. I am the Chair of the Board of Supervisors and the Supervisor for District One. And the first order of business is that roll call, so I'm here, District Two.
Good evening, everyone. Herona Movazquez, Supervisor, District Two, and current Vice Chair.
District Three.
Good evening, Tammy Ontiveras, District Three.
District Four.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Judy Begay, District Four Supervisor.
And District Five Supervisor Fowler is not able to join us. She is actually traveling to Washington, DC for work on behalf of the county, so she won't be with us this evening. So our second order of business is to honor our country, so those who can, please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And our next order of business is call to the public, and this is the time where members here in person with the Board or those online can address the Board of Supervisors and make comments, ask questions, discuss matters that are not on the agenda. Because they are not on the agenda and therefore are not part of our agenda, the open meeting law does not allow us to engage in discussion of these items. They can be put on for a future Board meeting, or they can be referred to for administration for further discussion or action. But this is the time for the public to be able to address the Board. We ask that keep your comments to three minutes. And a reminder that this is an open public meeting, so we ask you to be courteous and civil. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Clerk to let her explain. Those of you in person or those of you online can join us for the call to the public. So let's go ahead, Lindsay, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. At this time, if there's anyone here that would like to make a comment, we have comment cards by the door. You can just fill it out, your name that you'd like to comment, or we don't have a lot of people here tonight, so we can have you come up to the podium. If you're watching on the stream, you can email us at boardcomments@coconino.az.gov, and I can read your comment for you. And we do have one comment card from Colleen Maring. If you'd like to come on up to the podium, please unmute your speaker. We'll provide three minutes on the clock for you to speak. It'll turn green, and then it'll turn red when the three minutes is up. You can please state your name for our minutes. We'd appreciate it.
And Colleen, it's great to see you. Glad that you're joining us this evening, so please.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Supervisors. My name is Colleen Maring. I am the Chief People Officer at Northern Arizona Healthcare. Very happy to be back here as a part of our commitment to be present and visible and listen in the communities we serve. Thank you for those of you who were able to participate or promoting our FMC Campus Reuse Forums last month. This month, we wanted to come celebrate with you the voters' endorsement of the CCC Bond to expand in particular our healthcare and allied healthcare educational opportunities. And we wanted to be here to share our commitment to continue to host CCC students for their clinical placements and training. So as an allied healthcare professional, whether you're nursing, or we're really, really excited and very grateful to Dr. Heiser and the CCC team for adding RAD techs, OR scrub techs, and respiratory therapy in this new expansion. Those are huge for our community. All of those student courses require clinical placements in an acute care, typically in an acute care setting. We're one of the few settings available in our county, certainly the only trauma center, and often the only one that is economically feasible for our students to go to. So we are committed to continuing to host as many students as CCC can put through its programs. Just since January through October, we've hosted 118 students in clinical rotations from CCC as part of our more than 900 that we've hosted at the organization from NAU and Yavapai College and others. Again, not only do we want to help train our local students and residents, but we love to hire them. They are our best hires. They are already connected to the community, and it is a win for everyone because we see that education and economic empowerment of our local residents and keeping them in our community as they continue to advance their careers and economic power with us. We love that it's a continuous circle, so we love to hire folks to come in as a CNA, even through our local caveat programs in the high school. They can get their CNA there. They start working for us as a tech. We then pay their tuition to go to nursing school at CCC and sometimes transition to NAU for their BSN, or again, with the expansion of these programs into OR scrub techs, respiratory therapy, and radiology techs. Those are so critical for our community. We don't have those programs locally right now. Without those programs, we face really serious labor shortages in those areas, and that has been a significant challenge for us because we're trying to recruit people into this community to provide that service, or we're having to ship people out of the community to get education. So again, wanted to thank the county and congratulate each of you and CCC for the passage of the bond this month. We're very excited to continue to host and do everything we can to support that growth here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us this evening. Really appreciate the update, so. All right, anybody else?
I do not have any other comment cards. If there's anyone here in the room that wanted to provide a comment, you can make your way up to the podium now for the public comment portion of the meeting.
I mean, we have Sue Brown and Steve Peru out there. I mean, I can't believe you aren't going to be making some comments. And Liz Archuleta. You know, people have spent a lot of time around here, so. Anybody else?
No, we do not have anyone else.
All right, then. Okay, that's good. I hope so. Members of the Board, we are then proceeding, and we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda are really items that are more administrative in nature. They are items that can be handled through one motion and one vote of the Board. These are items that are not subject for discussion. These are items that really are handled with one vote. If, however, members of the Board would like to have discussion on these items, we can remove them from the consent agenda, at which point they will be individually taken. There will be discussion and an individual vote. So at this time, I'm going to turn to my colleagues and ask if there are any items on the consent agenda that they would like to have removed from the agenda. Yes, Supervisor Vasquez. Item number five? Item number eight? Item number five and item number eight. Any other items? So we will remove items five and eight from the consent agenda. Then at this time, I'd undertake a motion to approve the consent agenda. Items one through 11, exclusive of number five and number eight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? It is unanimous. Consent agenda passes. We removed two items. Item number five is consideration and possible action to approve the community subaward agreement with the United Way of Northern Arizona for $20,000 from the Arizona Public Service Community Leadership Fund for the Developing Future Leaders Program in the corresponding budget amendment. And I see with us is Liz Archuleta, longtime Supervisor and now Northern Arizona United Way CEO. Please join us. And County Manager, do you have any comments to make on this?
I do not, but I'm honored to introduce Liz Archuleta, the Executive Director of the United Way of Northern Arizona, to talk a bit about the use of these funds and how it will be utilized in our community. So thank you, Liz.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Supervisor members, County Manager, and audience. Really happy to be here today, Liz Archuleta, President and CEO of United Way of Northern Arizona, to talk about our great work. And so this item on your agenda is something very exciting. This is an opportunity to provide a leadership development summit for 100 to 150 youth throughout Coconino County, and also then a subsequent leadership development series that will consist of about six workshops for 30 students to do a very deep dive in leadership development. That workshop series will culminate in a leadership experience that the students will work on in small groups to benefit their community or benefit their school. And so it'll be going through training around leadership development, and then they'll be able to apply their leadership development in a culminating project. We're very excited about this opportunity. The, you know, what we know is that youth right now face, you know, very difficult daily experiences. We know that suicide ideation is on the rise. We know that death by suicide is on the rise. We know that students with social, kids with social media get affected by that. And we often forget that all along the way, students are developing their leadership potential. And sometimes we see that really apparently in high school or middle school, and for some students, we don't see that till much later in life. But what we do know is that every student has the potential to be a leader. And every, you don't have to be, you know, from a particular background or from a particular socioeconomic status. You have the potential to be a leader, and we want to cultivate that in our young people because ultimately, we want them to be leaders in their community. And as adults, then, we want them to be the ones that are going to be, you know, giving back to their community. And so this is really exciting. As you know, United Way of Northern Arizona invests in kids at a very young age. We invest in kids at the preschool. We invest in kids at these very, these very critical transition points from the elementary to the middle school, when they're going from fifth grade to sixth grade, when they're going from middle school to high school, that eighth grade to ninth grade. And this particular program, we are targeting two of those transition points. We're targeting kids that are going from elementary to middle school, that will be incoming middle school students, or in this case, will just have had one semester of middle school, as well as those that will be incoming. And then we'll be targeting students who have just completed their one semester of being a freshman, and then those students that are going to be entering and after the summer as freshmen. So very exciting, very important transition points for kids. So the $20,000 is to support that. We already had a pilot program. We had a mini summit where we kind of tested out some of the workshops. We had students from the Grand Canyon that we invited, and then we invited some students from our other service area. Not with this funding, of course, with our own United Way donor funding. We had students from the Northeast. We had students from Holbrook and from Joseph City. And I will tell you that the students were so excited, especially from our rural areas, to be part of this type of programming. And to be able to have workshops that were specifically tailored to them and to what they perceive as their needs was very validating for them. And so we are really excited about bringing this now on a broader scale, now that we've had this pilot, to our students within Coconino County. And we'll be inviting students from all over, from all over the schools in Coconino County. We have a list of those schools, but of course, we can also work with our county superintendent of schools to get, you know, that information and provide that opportunity to students who would like to participate.
I have a question. So it sounds very exciting and a wonderful opportunity for our students, and how do they get selected or how do they participate in this leadership program?
Sure. So we're meeting with the principals, and of course, they can bring in counselors or, you know, anybody from the school that the principals would like to include. And what we are asking them is to please put this opportunity out to all students, but to please in particular encourage students that maybe have not had an opportunity before. So, you know, there'll be students that will be in student council, and they've had a lot of opportunities to build their leadership skills. That's not the first group that we want to see at the conference. We welcome, you know, them if there's space. And my son is in student council, so, you know. So just to tell you, it's those, it's students that maybe have not had an opportunity before. It's students who maybe just need that extra boost of confidence. It's students who maybe they have leadership potential and you know it, but they just need that extra little, you know, positive reinforcement. And so it's, again, we really want students who haven't had opportunity to be part of this, and then if there's space, then we will invite other students as well who have had some leadership opportunity experience.
Very good. And I know this is a pilot program. Are you looking for this to continue year after year?
We are.
Good.
Looking for it to continue year after year, and that's also part of our fundraising that we're doing.
Very good. Well, we have all kinds of goodies up there for fundraising incentives.
Yes.
So we know we are all taking part in the challenge to provide for, donate for United Way, so.
Yes, we appreciate that very much. The county's been a longtime partner, running an employee campaign, and we're very grateful for that.
Any other comments, questions, members of the Board? Yes, Supervisor Ontiveras.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a quick question. Actually, she asked the question that I was going to ask, and I know, I know. And, and just following along with that, so you, you said that you reach out to the principals in all of the schools in Coconino County. And then how do they do the outreach into the, into their school population, so it goes to every single student? Do you know?
I don't know that. We do leave that up to them.
Okay.
But they do bring in usually their counselors, although bring in, you know, the person that, or people that work directly, you know, with the students. So they may announce it like at a faculty meeting and, you know, give it to the faculty, the link to the website, and ask the faculty to, you know, recommend some students. So we do leave that up to each, to each principal.
Okay, so then it is faculty and/or counselor and/or principal recommended?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I shouldn't say recommended. They distribute the information, and they make sure that students from their school will be present.
Okay.
That's the one thing, is we want to make sure that their school is represented.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And, you know, they take responsibility for ensuring if we say we want, you know, 15 students from your school, then they'll be like, okay, we'll go and we'll notify this, you know, send out to all the students, but we'll ensure that you at least have 15 students.
Okay. Okay, so it's kind of filtered then at school level?
It is.
Before it gets to you guys?
Correct.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
There's no application, there's not like a, they don't have to submit an essay. It's not a, you know, exhaustive application. It's really letting each student, you know, kind of self-select, but ensuring that each school is represented, so holding the principal responsible for making sure that students from their school do attend.
Yeah, okay, got it. Thank you, Liz.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Well, first off, thank you for bringing this to us, and it's really exciting to see it grow to this level. Thank you for inviting me a couple months ago to speak at that pilot, I believe that was the same program. You know, I just wanted to say that seeing those kids from those rural areas come in and just see what's out there, you could tell that they were really into the process and meeting the folks that were talking to them and learning about just the opportunities beyond their small rural community. And so thank you for expanding this out.
Absolutely. If I may, I just wanted to say, you know, United Way, of course, does some incredible work. I just wanted to let you know that in addition to this, just last week, the United Way Board of Directors authorized $50,000 of emergency funding to assist with narrowing the SNAP gap. And so focusing on our youth again and children, we have distributed grocery store cards to kids who we know are hungry and that their families are in need, and then also helping fortify the food bank. So just, again, this is just some of the many things that we do.
Supervisor Begay.
Thank you, Liz, and all the committee members that you have, Board members, and I just want to say thank you so much. You know, I think this is a time that we really need to pay attention to our kids with everything that's happening out there now in this world. And so I just want to say, yeah, thank you so much, and then giving them the opportunity. And one of these days, some, one of them might even be sitting up here, you know, as a leader for, as a Board Supervisor or, you know, different, maybe Superintendent of Schools or, you know, whatever. So I just want to say thank you and, you know, for the outreach. And if you need any kind of help, you know, just come back to us, and we can try to help you do some outreach, you know. And it's a good program, I feel, you know, and it's going to give that opportunity to be successful for some of the students, and some of them don't have those opportunities at home. And so, like I did, I didn't have no opportunity like that, you know. It was like work, school, work, school, and that was that. So thank you so much.
And any, no more comments? So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the community subaward agreement with United Way of Northern Arizona. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous and passed. Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're moving along. Number eight. Consideration and possible action to approve the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Outreach SNAPO program agreement and budget agreement between the United States Department of Agriculture, Wildfire, and Coconino County Health and Human Services with a set funding level in the amount of $93,344.82 at a 40% reimbursement, or a maximum of $37,337.93 for a period of October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026, and to ratify work completed for the period October 1, 2025 through November 18, 2025. And I know we have Michelle Oxland here with us from Health and Human Services, and the reason we pulled this and wanted to hear is an update on where we are with SNAP. As the community knows, because of the federal shutdown, we were faced with the possibility of having approximately 1,800, 1,900 families here in Coconino County without SNAP benefits. The, as we know, federal government is back in session, and we understand SNAP benefits are also back. So we wanted to get an update from Michelle on this, and this seemed like a perfect opportunity to do so. So please, good to see you, Michelle. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Chair and Board of Supervisors, and I'm happy to give you a SNAP update as we know it today. In the world of Health and Human Services, things change rapidly. So November 9 allowed the continuation of the appropriation budget, which restored the funding for WIC and SNAP. But it allowed the vote to continue with the Department of Agriculture, FDA, and Department of Veterans Affairs to be fully funded for the full fiscal year. So we're not, when the appropriations come back up at the end of January, we are going to continue funding both SNAP and WIC through September 30. So they will not fall in that arena again due to this vote. There were three packages under the Department of Agriculture and FDA that were advanced as part of this budget. $8.2 billion for the Special Supplemental Nutrition Program for WIC, which is great news, fully funded. $460 million for the commodity supplementation food to assist low-income seniors. $37.8 billion in mandatory funding for child nutrition programs. $107 billion in mandatory funding for SNAP. When you think in 2024, that funding was $100,000, so this is a small bump to that. Reimbursements for both SNAP and WIC contingency reserves to account for the expenditures during the funding cuts. So this is all wonderful news. So what happened locally is during the shutdown, HHS and the public fiduciary worked together to help individuals on the public fiduciary's role for about two weeks, providing lunches through our senior center program. WIC continued services during the shutdown, and HHS did not need to touch the stability funds, but we're very grateful to know that there was a plan for over 1,900 children that were involved in that. SNAP in Coconino County affected 8,265 households and potentially affected our retailers. It is still too early to tell how far that reach went. We will probably not know for another three months. Some of the SNAP funding was implemented quickly, within 24 hours of the budget passing. Some were more delayed. Others lost eligibility during that period, and so we still don't know. Estimates currently are anywhere between $254,000 to $450,000 at this time. So we will return and let you know what that actual number is. Locally, there were long lines at our food banks with over 370 individuals at the Flagstaff Family Food Bank for hot meals. Our food drive was successful and appreciate everyone's participation as that made a big difference. There are a few changes, though, that this budget brought that you may not be aware of. The work requirement changed. The age limit was 54. Able-bodied adults without dependents are now go up to 64. They have to work 20 hours a week. We also have, per the guidelines, exemptions for American Indians, so they will not have to fall into that work requirement. And in 2028, states who have a SNAP error above 6% will have to pay 5% of their costs, all the way up to 15%. They're expecting this to be the biggest change in effect, but that is in 2028, so we have some work to do to get those error rates down. I do not know what our current error rate is, but we will find that out for you. But I appreciate your support during this time.
Thank you. Well, good news and bad news, and appreciate the update. And I understood that we were able to get 400 turkeys during Stuff the Bus and brought in over 12,000 pounds of dried and canned foods. And want to thank everybody from the county. So many county people were involved with that, and our community that came out and generously gave. And it sounds like we will continue to generously give to make sure that we make up the difference for those in need. So really appreciate it, Michelle.
I appreciate your support.
Any other comments, questions, members of the Board? Yes. Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you for the good news in terms of the SNAP and WIC benefits for our families because it's so important. One of the things that I realized during this time when the shutdown happened is just how fragile our food systems are locally and how much we need to be really looking at how we can make our systems a little more local, a little more resilient. And so I just wanted to make, point that out because, you know, while we have the initial return of services, and we know it's going to be changing some, we still are having more and more people with food insecurity. And so we really need to be paying attention and investing in things that give us stronger food security in our local areas, community gardens and whatnot. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, and I agree completely.
All right. Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the Supplemental Nutrition Assistant Program Outreach Program Agreement as set forth in the agenda. Supervisor Ontiveras.
So move.
Second.
And a second by Supervisor Vasquez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you, Michelle, for being with us. All right. So that concludes our consent agenda. So we are moving along. We have more consent agendas, it looks like. However, members of the Board, we need to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors, do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, being the Flood Control District, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Members of the Board, we now have a Flood Control District Consent Agenda. Consideration and possible Consideration and possible action to award RFP 2025-103 and approve an agreement between TYPSA Inc., formerly Astec Engineering Group, and Coconino County Flood Control District for Environmental Services related to the Promoting Resilient Operation for Transformative, Efficient, and Cost-Saving Transportation PROTECT Grant in the amount of $79,109.96 for a term through December 31, 2027. Members of the board, do you want this removed from the consent agenda? Or if not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second? I have a second by Supervisor Baguette. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous and it has passed. Members of Directors of the Flood Control District, we need to now resolve as the Board of Supervisors, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Antiveras. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We are now the Board of Supervisors. Members of the board, we must now resolve as the Health District Board of Directors, do I have a motion? A motion by Supervisor Baguette, do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Antiveras. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We are now the Health District Board of Directors. Members of the Health District, we have a Public Health District consent agenda. There are two items as set forth in great detail on number 13 and 14 on your agenda. Do you want to remove either one of these from the consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the Health District Board Consent Agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Supervisor Baguette. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is passed. Members of the board, we must now resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by, okay, we have a, by Supervisor Vasquez, a second by Supervisor Baguette. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now the Board of Supervisors, but not for long. I would entertain a motion to resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Supervisor Vasquez.
Second.
Do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Antiveras. All those in favor of resolving as the Jail District, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now the Jail District. Members of the Jail District, we have a consent agenda as specifically set forth in our agenda for RFPs for prisoner transportation services. Do you need to remove this from the consent agenda? And if not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. I have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
And a second by Supervisor Antiveras. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We have passed that consent agenda. I will now entertain a motion for us to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now the Board of Supervisors once again. And members of the board, we have an action item. This is item number 16. It's consideration and possible action to approve the Board of Equalization Resolution 2025-02, receiving and accepting the hearing officer's decision for the 2026 Notice of Change of Review Petition for Parcel 10026-005, in which a hearing was conducted by our hearing officer on November 3, 2025. Members of the board, this is in item 16 in your packet. I'm going to turn this over to our clerk, Lindsay Daly, to give us and brief us on this item.
Sorry, Chair, did you guys resolve as the Board of Equalization? I heard you resolve as the Board of Supervisors, but, thank you. I always say.
Now you tell me. I'm so sorry. I apologize, but we are going to correct that. Members of the board, do I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Equalization?
So moved.
We have, we have two people moving and one person seconding. Supervisor Baguette, a second. We are now the Board of Equalization. I apologize, we jumped the gun a bit. We are still here. I did jump the gun, Judy, you're right. We are here, consideration and possible action to approve the Board of Equalization resolution. As I previously read, we have Lindsay Daly, our clerk, who is going to tell us where we are here on the Notice of Change of Review Petition.
Thank you, Chair Horsemen and Supervisors and Board of Equalization. This is the last round of our Board of Equalization appeal processes for this calendar year. An Arizona revised statute requires that each year the assessors issue a notice of change to property owners if a change in the property valuation or legal classification occurred after the original notice of value was mailed. The notice of change is based on one or more of the following changes: new construction, destruction, and addition to the parcel, so parcel combining; a deletion from the parcel, parcel splitting; a change in the use of property and/or an escaped property that may not have been valued and is being added for the first time. Notices of change must be mailed by the assessor's office by September 30 of each year, and this year the assessor's office mailed them out on September 19. If the property owner disagrees with the value or legal class change, the property owner then has 25 days to file a petition for review of notice of change. And that's with the Board of Equalization, all of you. So this year, the deadline for that was October 14, which was the 25 days after that September date. And I just want to note that the Notice of Change appeal process is different than the other two appeal processes that have come before you. And that's because for Notice of Value appeal process and for the personal property appeal process, the property owner appeals to the assessor's office first, before it comes to the Board of Equalization. So that's how this Notice of Change appeal process is different, is there's not an appeal to the assessor's office prior to it coming to be appealed to the Board of Equalization. And speaking of that, the time constraint that we're under to have that Board of Equalization hearing is outlined in statute and it's very constrained. So there's a little bit of, not much room for us to get the appeal, schedule the hearing, have the hearing officer hear it. The hearing officer has the ability also to take it into consideration for 10 days and we have to get a hearing notice sent out 10 days. So there's a whole timeline for that. And as you are aware, the board appointed a hearing officer to conduct the hearings and make recommendations to the Board of Equalization. And the appeal petitions that meet ERAS requirements are then scheduled for hearings, which we received only one appeal petition for this Notice of Change appeal process to the Board of Equalization. Mr. Schaus, who's here tonight, is the property owner that did submit an appeal, a Notice of Change appeal to the Board of Equalization. And so we did schedule the hearing with our hearing officer for November 3. And all the documents pertaining to that hearing are in your meeting packet in preparation for the board meeting tonight. The hearing officer at the hearing heard testimony from the property owner, Mr. Schaus, and from Dan Elifson, the appraiser with the assessor's office. And based off of the testimony and evidence provided, the hearing officer's decision was for full cash value to remain as the designated amount that the assessor had, so there was no change to the assessor's full cash value for the property. Statute does allow the property owner, if they're dissatisfied with the evaluation, to appeal to tax court and there's still time for Mr. Schaus to do so if he so desires. Per statute and per Board of Equalization policy, which was adopted by the board due to having a hearing officer, wanting to appoint a hearing officer, the board's review is limited as follows. The county board's review of the hearing officer's decision is limited. The county receives the decision of the hearing officer and shall uphold the decision of the hearing officer unless there's substantial evidence presented to the Board of Equalization that the procedures for the hearing were not followed, state law was violated, or there's no evidence from the record to substantiate the hearing officer's decision. Also, the board may not substitute its judgment for the judgment of the hearing officer with regard to the evidence. The decision must be based on evidence presented by parties attending the hearing. This item is on the agenda tonight to capture the record of the decision within the statutorily required deadline, which is this Friday, November 21. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
And I will point out to the board that we, besides having the hearing officer who's available if there are questions, hearing officer we appointed to heard this, we also have an attorney for the Board of Equalization, Rose Winkler. Rose is not available, I guess she's on a cruise somewhere and we hope she's having a good time. Her partner, Ashley DeBoer, I understand, is available if members of the board have any legal questions. I believe that our clerk did outline for us that our review on this is limited. The decision that we have is the decision of the hearing officer unless there is substantial evidence presented to us that the procedures were not followed, state law was violated, or there was no evidence on the record to substantiate the hearing officer's decision. So with that, I do understand that we do have the property owner that is here for this appeal and at this time, would you please join us? And we will give you an opportunity to explain why you are here on this appeal.
Yes, thank you. So as a layperson, I apologize if I'm out of line. Simply put, I feel that the notice of change is out of order based on the fact that my property had no change in use between the time of my first notice, which is dated February 11, 2025. My official C of O was dated as of December 24, 2024. So as of the time of this notice and between this notice and the notice of change, as far as I was concerned, there was no change in the use of the property and that the original notice should have stood. That was all I had to say.
Thank you, and thank you for being with us here today. Members of the board, do you have any questions of the property owner or his questions on appeal? All right. Do, and we, again, we do have the hearing officer present by phone, I believe, and also the attorney present by phone. If you would like, we can call them forward or if you believe you have enough information from the packet, which sets forth the resolution and the hearing officer's decision. We have heard the reasons as to why the property owner is here with us today. We need to make a decision. Does it arise to the level for us to basically open this matter up, knowing that we can't substitute our judgment for the judgment of the hearing officer? It needs to be a reason as the three reasons that we've outlined. Any comments or questions? Then at this time, if there are no further comments or questions, we are here to consider a motion to, in fact, approve the Resolution 2025. Oh, no, that's not, it's the other one. A motion to approve the Board of Equalization Resolution 2025, receiving and accepting the hearing officer's decision for a 2026 Notice of Change review petition for Parcel 126005, in which a hearing, as we've talked about, was conducted and we've gotten the results of that hearing on November 3, 2025. Do I have a motion to accept the Board of Equalization Resolution and the hearing officer's decision?
Chair, I just want to say that before this hearing, I read through all of the documents and I find no reason not to accept it. So therefore, I will make a motion to approve the Board of Equalization Resolution 2025 Josh 02.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of upholding the hearing officer's decision, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. And just to the property owner, you do have, as you heard, an opportunity for appeal to the tax court. Since we have hired and approved a hearing officer to hear this, hearing officer's one who takes the evidence, makes her finding, and provides that to us, our review then of our hearing officer's decision is limited. And as you can tell from the motion and the unanimous approval of the board, we didn't feel that it met the standards for us to replace our decision from the hearing officer's decision. So, okay, thank you. Good luck to you. Thanks for being here with us.
Thank you, Mr. Schaus.
All right. We are moving along. We're doing great. So we're moving along. We have number 17, Discussion on Possible Action to, for the adoption of Resolution 2025-67, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors approving the 2026 State and Federal Agenda authorizing Government Affairs to develop priority advocacy lists and authorizing advocacy efforts on the agenda. Members of the board, we took an initial look at this during our last board meeting. There were some recommendations on changes and additions to be made to this. Those, in fact, were made. We've gotten an updated list on the board's authorized state legislative and administrative agenda. It's before us, we've had an opportunity to review it. At this time, we can obviously ask any questions or make any additional changes. But before we do that, our deputy county manager is here for comments.
Madam Chair, I think before I make comments, I think you need to.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
I have done it again.
I'm sorry, this is all whatever deputy clerk, but we need to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors real quick.
Thank you so much, and you're coming from the heavens. We're hearing you.
Thank you.
You can tell I'm tired. Okay, I am so sorry, members of the board, I'll try to do better. Do I have a hearing for us to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
I love that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now the Board of Supervisors. We are no longer the Board of Equalization. We are still on number 17. I'm still going to turn this over to Eric Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. This is, again, as the chair did outline, is our revised legislative and federal affairs agenda for the year. The only change that was made from our conversation with the board before is on the state bullets of education, which I think, having talked with each of you, represents the views that we heard here on the dais, so that I believe that we can adopt this. I will just add that we have had some conversation with the county attorney about some proposals he would like to add for some government affairs assistance. We will deal with that into November as we socialize those ideas with the members.
So members of the board, any comments or questions on this? You know, obviously, one of the nice things about this is that it codifies basically the position here of the Board of Supervisors and our focus on our state legislative and federal legislative agendas, which authorizes us to be able to proceed as we are out in the public and also as we are able to advocate on behalf of these agenda priorities. So we really appreciate this. It's a pretty exhaustive list, but an important list that absolutely affects the people here in Coconino County. So any comments or questions? Then, yes, I'm sorry, Supervisor Vasquez.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the work that the teams put into it and I look forward to those further conversations because we do have some amendments, but I agree with you, it's good to get this base down as our foundation and I'm full support of our legislative agenda. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I just may, in response, real quick, we will work next year to make sure we have deadlines in place and so that we can do this in one moment, but we're working with elected officials in many departments just to sort of, in a new process here to codify the list, so we'll get that cleaned up.
All right. Then with that, I would, I would enter, I'm so sorry, do you have a?
No, I was going to make a motion.
I love that.
Okay.
We have a motion.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-07.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Supervisor Baguette? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting the resolution of the Board of Supervisors approving our 2026 State and Federal Agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Thank you so much, and thank you, Eric, and our government affairs team for really putting this together. Really appreciate your hard work. All right. We are going to move on, and this is a very important matter. This is our presentation, discussion, consideration, and possible action to canvass the November 4 consolidated election in Coconino County. And I know our election director, Esler Musta, is with us and also our recorder, Aubrey Sandemrigger, is here with us as well. So please. So please. One of the most important things we get to do is to canvas elections and make sure that every vote counts here in Coconino County.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Horseman, and Board of Supervisors. Thank you for entertaining me for my first presentation to you guys. I am our county recorder, and we just finished our November 4th, 2025 election. And these next couple slides are all the people that made it happen. They make me look good. They worked really, really hard. This is the Recorder's Office team, including our Tuba City Michelle Billy permanent staff up there. And we have temporary staff at the Tuba Office Team. Veronica Secandy has, Secody, rather, has come back several times. Mabel and Meredith were new. Our mobile unit team was out for the entirety of the early voting period, traveling around to different chapter houses on the Navajo Nation, providing in-person early voting options. Our Hopi translator worked with us from Navajo County this year. Maxine Wadsworth came in kind of in a pinch-hit situation. Our translator that we had hired was unable to actually come in for work, and so she, Maxine, was extremely gracious and came and worked with our county to make sure that we had Hopi translation for this ballot. And of course, our early voting board team that works with the Recorder's Office, I believe they are all tried and true return folks, and they did a great job. I want to point out a few of our important dates. September 20th is when we sent out our uniformed and overseas citizens absentee voting ballots. These are the UACAV ballots. We sent out 193. We got 63 voted ballots returned. We are using a new ballot system for our overseas voters. So this was a unique challenge for this election, but it seemed to have gone pretty well. Last day to register to vote, we had 89,310 registered voters at that point on October 6th. On October 8th, our early voting began, and 63,300 early ballots were mailed at that point. Those are the all the folks that are already on the able list. By the last day to vote early in person, we had 283 total early ballots that were voted in person on that day. And of course, November 4th was Election Day. We received 22,107 early ballots out of the 63,628 that were issued this election. Again, that 63,628, the 22,107 is 34.7% of the ballots returned. That's about expected for a special election, off-year election. We had 24,525 total voters, voters that voted by early ballot. Again, this is consistently a strongly used option, and 90% of our voters this election used the early ballots. We're going to be a little repetitive here. First batch of early ballots were sent on October 8th, that 63,300. We have eight early voting sites, three that are the Recorder's Office early voting sites, the downtown Flagstaff Office, our Eastside Flagstaff Mall, and the Alta Edison Native American Outreach Center in Tuba City. We also partner with cities and towns to make sure that we have early voting options for folks that are a little bit further afield. Williams, Sedona, Page, Fredonia, and the Grand Canyon Superintendent of Schools all opened their doors to assist with the early voting process. Downtown, our office, we had 185 ballots dropped off at the counter. We had 60 people vote in person, and we had no provisional ballots. The Flagstaff Mall office, we had 47 people vote in person and zero provisional ballots. Tuba City, we had 94 people that voted in person and two provisional ballots. And for the other voting sites, we have that broken down as well. There were a total of 228 people that voted in person and a total of 218 ballots that were dropped off. We opened all 17 of our ballot drop boxes for this election, and these are the numbers that are broken down. I believe the board has these in front of them, so we're not going to spend a lot of time on it, but we had 8,939 ballots dropped off in drop boxes, which is 40.44% of the early voters that used our Dropbox systems to return their ballots and vote. And the early voting site, again, that mobile voting unit, those folks were out traveling the entire early voting period. We had 55 people vote in person, and we had 61 ballots that were dropped off at that mobile voting trailer and three provisional ballots. Here again is a breakdown of the individual sites where they were and how things were broken down, how what was broken down as far as dropped off, voted in person, and provisional ballots. We did have one voter that needed to be assisted by our special boards. This is something that our early board does for folks who may be hospitalized or otherwise unable to go somewhere to vote their ballot or drop it off. And this is again, the kind of overview of the early voting report. 63,628 ballots issued, 22,107 accepted and counted, 302 were rejected. They were mostly rejected because there were signatures missing or they were mostly rejected because they were received too late. We did have signatures missing or people who signed for someone else as the other bigger reasons, but total ballots that were undeliverable by the post office were 2,315. There are several reasons, there's several processes with curing our ballots. If a ballot is missing a signature, it has to be cured by 7:00 PM on Election Day. That person has to come in and sign or if the envelope, I apologize, envelope was signed by someone else, they have to vote a replacement early ballot or vote at a polling location again by 7:00 PM on Election Day. And that curing period counts for people who have mismatched signatures, and those can be could be cured up to 5:00 PM on Friday, November 7th. It's a shorter curing period than we have on our midterm and general elections. Provisional ballot report, we had a total of 56 provisional ballots. We counted 38 of them, which is 67.86%. We did not count 18. These numbers tend to be reversed in our general elections because these ballots were all the same question across ballot styles. There were a lot that we could accept, even if they were voted on the wrong ballot style. Ballots that were counted had were mostly address changes, and the not counted ballots were predominantly people who weren't registered to vote. And in summary, again, that 89,300 people registered in Coconino County to vote. We had 24,525 total voters, 27.46% turnout. And again, the 90% of folks that chose to vote by early ballot. And that's it. That's all I got for you. Any questions?
Colleagues, any questions? Supervisor Antiveras.
I think just to comment on, this has been, thank you first for the presentation. That was very informative. And I think it was the 302 that weren't counted. Is that about statistically in line with what you see in other in other elections? Like, I'm not I'm not questioning why they weren't because you very well put that put that out in the presentation. I was just wondering if that's kind of statistically...
So to be blunt, this is the first election I've ever run. My understanding is that that is actually relatively low because we have relatively low turnout on these special election years that aren't the general elections. And we were also able to count ballots that weren't necessarily the right ballot style because they are the same ballot question across the board with this election. Am I correct on that, Donna?
Come, join me. It's very consistent. It's actually kind of surprising how consistent, like, we almost always have the same amount, like, 30 or 40 signatures that aren't being able to cure for, like, mismatched signatures, things like that. Probably next time, what would be useful is to show you, I just thought of this, to show you how many we had at the beginning that we were able to be cured because we bring that down so much during the early voting period of, these are just the ones we had. If you go to the early ballot report, oh, yeah, so like, for example, the signature missing, we probably had double that before, but we were able to get people in to sign. So these were only ultimately the ones that we had to reject because we weren't able to cure them. Also with, like, signed by someone else, things like that, a lot of times spouses will think that it's okay to sign for for each other or things like that, and we catch that, and then the other spouse is able to go to the polls and vote their own ballot, something like that. So, and same with signature different. We have a lot of signatures that we just are not absolutely sure that it was the voter who signed based on just comparison of what we have on file. And we go through a process of reaching out to those voters and having them confirm that it indeed was them who was able to vote their ballot and sign the ballot envelope. So hopefully that...
Well, yeah, that did answer the question. And while you were, while you guys were explaining this, it just kind of dawned on me how carefully you guys watch that signature verification process. So, thank you for that. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Actually, I have another question, too. So, and the total ballots undeliverable by the post office, 2,315, that seemed like a large amount. Is that also statistically similar to the other elections?
Yes, and actually, Chair Horseman, it actually is fairly low. What, yeah, we constantly are trying to clean up our rolls, and voters just move too quickly for us to keep keep track of. And we have seen a consistent about 5% to 10% of any mailing that goes out is undeliverable, and that's just the way it is. But out of that 2,300, some of them probably went to the polls to update their address, especially in general elections. Even though this is the number that was returned to us, that doesn't mean they didn't vote a replacement ballot, things like that. So, but we we are constantly sending out notices to voters to to get them to update their information, so.
And then another question, I know you always use volunteers, which is wonderful. Our community steps forward. How many volunteers were you using for this, or did you have to use volunteers for this?
So are you talking about poll workers? That's that's Esler's presentation.
Never mind, I will save.
We're not, we're not Election Day yet. This is just before Election Day.
Good, very good. Appreciate it. Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Really, really interesting to see all the breakdown, and I had the most important question, which is, is that a new logo? Because that's pretty cool.
So I'm working on designing my own.
Well, the design's kind of cool.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm just looking at the our early voting sites and also for the for the mobile also, they're very, very low. I'm just kind of wondering, is there something that can that we're looking at that we might do to do? Because they're very low numbers in Fredonia all the way down to Williams, and then Bodaway Gap on the tribal lands, with the exception of Tonalea, you know, they have 33, and everybody else is like 1, 2, 3, 5, that's it, so.
Supervisor Begay, I I believe this is most likely due to the nature of this election. It doesn't compare to like a presidential or even a midterm election in just voters engaging, and because we definitely see higher numbers during those kinds of elections. Although we are out there doing everything that we do for a big election, the turnout just isn't there.
And Supervisor Begay, I also want to remind us all that this isn't, this is just the people that choose to vote early in person. This doesn't reflect how many people are turning in their ballot and how many people are utilizing the early voting system, just how many people have decided that they would like to vote early in person. And that is a matter of personal preference, that a lot of people prefer to mail their ballots back or drop their ballots off.
All right. And thank you very much, appreciate it, and that we appreciate the update and the breakdown. It's very instructive for us, so thank you. So Esler.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Esler Musta, on behalf of the Elections Department, I'm here to co-present the canvas of the consolidated elections with the Recorder's Office. And I'll do a couple of things. I'll walk you through some of the similar information that the recorder shared already with the key milestones and 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 primary have the focus around looking at voter voter turnout, ballot processing, tabulation, and releasing of the of the information. And I'll conclude with the next steps in this in this process as well. If I can get the clicker. All right, so the we have the old logo from the Recorder's Office, but the administration of the elections in our in Coconino County is is joint responsibility between the Recorder's Office and the Elections Department, with the recorder overseeing the voter registration and early voting, as well as the Native American Outreach Program, and with the roles and responsibilities under the Elections Department, coordinating the other activities that are listed here. I always bring this up for all the canvases that we we present to the board because I feel that this is very important to note the mission and vision and values of our Elections Department, primarily the importance of grounding that mission and servicing all the voters in our in our county, as well as having this mission drive the everyday work that the department does. And I think this this mission and this election was a great example of the opportunity that every election is a reset, and the expectations of the public are always high and consistently wanting to deliver free and fair elections in in our county. Similar to the the major milestones and deadlines, I wanted to point out that the preparation for this election started way early in in May when the both the Community College and the Pinewood Fire District called a polling place election for for November. And the Superintendent of Schools has a role every time that there is an election with an educational agency, and they were very... an educational agency, and they were very much part of this process from the start with the responsibility of voter, the voter education pamphlet, as well as the campaign finance information that it's a statutory requirement for, for the Superintendent of Schools to, to complete. And I know that Superintendent Mango Paget is on, and I'll just, like to turn this over to her for just a, a couple of comments as well.
Yeah, thank you, Essler. I just want to bring up the fact that in part, as far as the elections go for the bonds, for the community colleges, that the Superintendent of Schools reviews and works with the attorneys from the CCC to put the pamphlet together. We constructed a timeline for the elections and had it verified by the Elections Department. We collect the pro and con statements and review that they meet the standards. We do the PAC filings, as well as keep the financials for the PAC, as well as the website maintenance for the elections. And that is the role of the Superintendent of Schools for the bond, for the Community College.
Thank you.
So, I'll, I'll kind of talk a little bit about the ballot design layout and accessibility. This was a 14, a 14-inch ballot. We had precinct level reporting, there were 77 ballot styles. There were, and the majority of the, of the, of the ballot styles only included the, the Community College question number 490, and then there were two precincts that had the, the question for the Pinewood Fire District. We were similarly to, to what the Recorder shared, we were expecting a very moderate turnout for this election in the range of 25% to 35%. And the accessibility of equipment was prepared to have both, to have English, Hopi, Navajo, and Spanish. And we continued to providing that, the language translation and, and audio files on our website, something that we started from early last year. So, this is a snapshot of the official results, of the same numbers that you saw earlier with a voter turnout of 27.46%. And just to put this a little bit in perspective, with the last time that we had a single question election, that was in May of 2022, which happened to be the Community College being on the ballot for that question, the voter turnout was 22.57%. So, we did better than, definitely better than 20, than 22. And I also reached out to look at some other counties. Every election is, is, is unique, and I, there were two other counties that had county-wide elections with county-wide questions. That was Cochise County and Maricopa, and they were respectively at 27.6 and 26.5%. So, very similar, very similar in terms of voter turnout. Again, a little bit of a breakdown of the preferred method of voting in, in our county for voters with, and it's important to point out that early voting is the favorite way of, of, preferred way for to cast a ballot in Coconino County with 90%. And then again, to, again, put things in perspective, in 2022, we were at 95% of early, of early ballots returned. The graph that you see in the bottom of the screen shows the voter check-ins, hourly voters' check-ins at the, at the, at each of the polling locations. And we weren't expecting this, and it was, it was pleasant to see it, but it doubled from 20, from 2022. Again, a little bit of like the method, and, and we did something slightly different this time to kind of point out the, the preferred way of casting a ballot in different areas of the county. These two maps, and I apologize if you're not able to see them very clearly, but we do have them in larger format. So, we broke down all the municipal towns and cities, as well as the, the Native American, like, areas, the, those communities, and then the rural areas of the county to kind of show that in the, in the, in the map on the, on the left side, that's the early voting, and those are the areas with the deep purple that are taking advantage of, of casting their ballot primarily with early. And this is, and then the opposite is, is true with the Election Day voter turnout, where you have the Native American communities that, and to some extent, Page and Fredonia, like, showing up and, and voting, voting in, in person. And this is important because some of the conversations that there are coming in, and especially in preparation and anticipation for next year, there's always the, a good information to know where the early voting and, and Election Day voting is taking place in our county. This next slide just shows out, again, the breakdown between the citizen towns and, and the rural areas of the county of the, of the overall voter turnout. And this is grouped, so the, the countywide, the turnout was at 27.46%, and those graphs that, like Sedona Rural Areas of the County, Williams Flagstaff, they, they exceeded the overall voter turnout of the county. And then you can see the other communities that, in a way, were lower than the, the voter turnout that, that, that was the county average. So, so it was just, wanted to give you the, the, another illustration to, to see what areas participated and turned out to, to cast the ballot. Then the, the graph, the map that, that shows the precincts in the county, it's, it's a depiction of all the different precincts, 75 precincts in the county, and it's a breakdown in red is where the 490 question underperformed, and in green is, are the precincts where the, the question 490 was, received more than 50% of the, of the ballot. So, again, we thought this would be a good way to illustrate some of the, the election results in both, some graphics and, and, and using the geography of the, of the county. This election is, was significantly different from the previous election, so we knew that we had to communicate with voters in a, in a different way. We had an opportunity to actually be more innovative because we did not have some of the more kind of red tape bureaucratic ways of communicating with voters that we have during a, a presidential election year or a state or federal primary election. So, we used a little bit more like, kind of engaging graphics to get people to, to cast their ballot, to be interested and, and understand that this election was taking place, and we used different means of, of communications, from sample ballots to different news releases, social media, and, and other, and other avenues. A little bit about the vote centers and polling locations, so we had, this is a consolidated election, so it gives us an opportunity to not have the same footprint in terms of polling places that we have for the big elections. But we had 33 polling places, 15 of them were vote centers. And we had ADA accessibility and voting devices at all of those locations. All polling places opened on time. Tuba City was the, like, the first voter checked in and cast the ballot in Tuba City on Election Day. And the last location to cast the ballot was the Grace, the Grace Community Church. So, we, we always mention those because those are good bookend stories for, for, for us. And there were no wait times. This is, again, a graph of the, the vote centers, like, there's always the idea with the vote centers that there is a, a good mix between the priest, the, the voters that utilize them, between the voters that are assigned in those precincts and, and out of precincts. This election, the numbers were relatively moderate and, and, and low overall, so this graph kind of just illustrates that. The top 10 polling locations that we had accounted for 58% of the, of the vote, of the voters that cast the ballot on Election Day. So, that's, that's also an important number. Our polling places, and it goes back to you, Chair Horstman, for, with the question, we had 223 election board workers deployed at all the 33 different polling locations on Election Day. We had 92 inspectors and election day technician and, and troubleshooters that, that staffed those, those polling locations. Even though this was a nonpartisan election, we value the transparency and, and ability to, to build trust and, and, and be responsible to the needs in our community. So, we did invite political observers to, to participate, both Republican and Democrats, and we had three of them deployed at, at polling locations and one at the, at the election center. What was also unique for this election, because our county had a polling place election, and we were one of the 10 counties statewide that had that opportunity, we had, we hosted two counties, Apache and Mojave, election administrators and folks from the Recorder's Office, or the Apache County, that came in and embedded with us to, to witness all the, the internal processes in Coconino County. They got to visit some of the polling locations and, and, and share some of those practices across the, across the board. I want to talk a little bit about tabulation, because again, this is one of the areas that is going to be coming up, and, and I wanted to, like, share with the Board some of the performance measures for the tabulation. By the end of the election night on, on that Wednesday morning at 2:00 AM, we had tabulated 80, 80, a little bit over 80% of the, of the ballots from the polling places and the early ballots that were voted and processed. And we reached 99.6, 62% of the, of the ballots that were cast on the, on election on Thursday at 6:00 PM. So, you always hear about the, how long does it take to, to tabulate ballots, and I think those are really strong performance indicators for, for our county, and we were done by 100% after the curing deadline was completed. So, what's next? After the Board canvases and makes the, accepts the official results today, we'll transmit these results to both the Pinewood Fire District, as well as the Community College, and, and so they can move on with the, with the, with the process of, of notifying the, the tax authorities and all the, the next steps in, in their area. I wanted to similarly, like, recognize a, a lot of the people in the Elections Department that put a lot of long hours and, and made sure that we, again, lived up our mission, our mission of serving the voters in our county. Whitney Youschak, Margaret Panado, Holly Roth, Lindell Custodio, Sharon Siffling, Denise Anderson, Todd Hare, and we do share, and I'm very appreciative, Ray Dawn, Michelle Billy, for the Native American Outreach Program, we share them with the Recorder's Office. And we also had some NAU students that were able to help us, Logan Johnson, Eric Wise, Nico Valdez, and Thomas Bard. I also would not want to miss the opportunity of thanking the Recorder's Office for their partnership, but also thanking some key departments that have always stuck with us and, and supported us in the, in conducting the elections, the Sheriff's Office, IT, Public Works, Facilities, Emergency Management, the Superintendent of Schools that I mentioned earlier, and especially, I want a, a, a special recognition for our Detective Meyer from Sheriff's Office, he's a TLO, Deputy County Attorney Anding, and the Communication Director Randaza, that were with us on Election Day to help kind of facilitate if we had any, any issues, which I'm lucky to say that we, we did not, which is a, which is a good, which is a good thing. So, with that said, I'm going to conclude my presentation and see if there are any questions.
All right, any comments, questions? Just other than the huge thanks to both County Recorder and Elections, and all the volunteers, and the other departments that really, you know, always step up and make sure and ensure our right to vote is protected and that all of our ballots are counted. So, really appreciate all, everybody's work and, and for our whole community that stepped up on this, so thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, everybody says good job, so. At this point, we now have to take a motion to canvass the November 4th Consolidated Election in Coconino County. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Supervisor Vasquez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Antiveras. All those in favor of canvassing the November 4th Consolidated Election in Coconino County, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous, and it's done. And I, I now, yes, I think, a big round of applause, really. And, and I know we have some people here on behalf of CCC. I don't know if you want to make any comments or statements to the board? All right.
My name's Steve Prue. I was lucky enough to serve as the Chair of the Duly Organized and Registered Political Action Committee. I want to appreciate the Superintendent of Schools' Office. They were very supportive of, of providing guidance in terms of how to do the paperwork. I'd never done this in terms of being a formal Chair of a PAC, and so it was very, very gratifying. But I also want to acknowledge the support for the question throughout the county. And if you look at the individual precinct reports, while not unanimous, it was broad. But I do also want to acknowledge my partner, Sue Brown, who served as the Treasurer for the PAC as well, and so her efforts as well should be noted. The, certainly not speaking for the college that serves to speak, but I will say that the feedback from the community in our conversations with many, many folks was very positive. The outcome of this election is going to have multiple benefits for a very long period of time, from, from, from high school students that will have additional dual enrollment. You know, we heard from representatives from NIH at the beginning of the Board meeting with regard to health, CTE, law enforcement is going to benefit because they'll have an academy at, at CCC, as well as the East Flag Branch of the City County Library, which is going to be, also be planned for new, for new digs as well. So, again, there are just a lot of benefits, and this collectively rolls up into a benefit for, for local economy with regard to employment, upskilling, employers that are constantly looking for talent, and particularly those that want to remain in Coconino County to, to, to find where they, they want to land and, and create a family and a career. So, there are just so many benefits, and I'm very, very honored to be part of this effort. So, thank you too much to all of you. Thank you to everyone involved in this, and particularly thank you to the community that supported this question.
Thank you, and thanks for being here tonight. Really great to see both of you. So, we are moving along. We have a very important item on here, one that has been on for a while, and we are a public hearing item, number 19, consideration and possible action for the approval of Resolution 202563, adopting PSAM 25-001, envision 2045, the updated Coconino County Comprehensive Plan as modified by Tasmane, which includes recommended, recommended changes from prior work sessions, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the staff. This is, I know, something for community development, and I see our long-range planner, Melissa Shaw, is here with us today, as is Jess from Community Development. I don't know which one of you or both of you are going to take this on, and I'm going to first ask County Manager if he has any comments on this. This has been a long time of coming.
It has been a long time coming, and I just leaned over to our County Attorney's Representative and said, this is the moment you've been waiting for in, in representing community development. So, with that, I see Melissa Shaw is standing and just really appreciate the, the feedback provided by the Board and others in previous work sessions, and the incorporation of that feedback into the plan and, and the nimbleness of staff in, in working through this process. So, Melissa, without further ado, neighbor, it's great to see you, and thank you for taking the podium.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Horstman and Supervisors. We are, I think this is on, yeah. We are, I think this is on, yeah. Excited to be here tonight. It has been quite a few years since we began this process. And, but first, I do want to recognize that there are several people here. First, from our core planning team, who, you know, without the help of many county staff, we could not have accomplished what we've done. So there's Jay Kristelman, and Jess McNeely, and Nina Schmidt. Who else is here? Of course, Angela. And then, I think there are others online, but I can't see who else is online. But I know we also have Rose Tohe from our, our Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group is with us tonight, and also one of our planning commissioners. So really important group of people that did a tremendous amount of work all along the way with us. So we'll just jump right in. This first slide pretty much gives you an overview of what this plan encompasses. So it encompasses the entirety of Coconino County. This is a complete update to the 2015 Comprehensive Plan, including text, data, new and updated maps, figures, tables, the vision, goals, and policies. And it actually would not be adopted as a major amendment. This would be, that's an, that is an incorrect statement on the slide. This would be just adopted as a complete update to the plan. The, the plan does encompass all of Coconino County, and as you can see, it extends north to the border of Utah, and then east to the border of Navajo County, west to the border of Mojave County, and then on our southern side, it includes Yavapai and Gila Counties. We touch those borders. Approximately 12 million acres are in the county, and it includes all zoning districts and all supervisor districts. And the applicant tonight is our Community Development Department. Just a brief overview of the county population. It may be a little bit small on your screen, but the, I just want to move this here.
I have a question. Do we happen to have, I know we have the Comprehensive Plan here, and we have the resolution on this. Do we have these slides? Your very end.
I can pause for a moment.
I have to tell you, I don't have. I have the, I do not have them. I don't have them, but I'll get copies of them later.
I could give you my copy.
Okay, I can watch that. But I, I mean, this is really good stuff, and I want copies, so I'll get one later.
I'm happy to give you this at this point, if you'd like to.
So I'll shout out the rest.
And, excuse my, my notes on there, but if I forget something, then you can remind me.
For posterity, so.
The, this, this is a brief overview of the population of the county as of the 2020 census. And you can see on the top right chart, you know, all of Arizona, Coconino County, and then broken down, this is by incorporated areas leaving, the balance of unincorporated Coconino County population in 2020 was just over 53,000. So that kind of gives you an idea of the breakdown. The total of Coconino County, including all of the incorporated areas, was about 145,000. And then the bottom chart shows you just within the regional plan, the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Planning Area, 97,000 people live within that boundary. Outside of the city, there are 20,000 residents that live in unincorporated Coconino County within that boundary, and then outside of the regional planning area, then about 48,000 residents live in Coconino County unincorporated areas. This next slide shows the population of different communities known as census-designated places, and this is again, as of 2020. So we do know when the Census Bureau enumerates different communities. These are some of the communities that we can get specific population numbers on. And just to highlight a follow-up, a follow-up comment from your previous question, that the, the lines there in that yellow color are the locations on the Native American tribal nations that, and the populations associated with those. This slide shows you kind of the trajectory of the update of the Comprehensive Plan. The first plan in the county was 1975. It was adopted as a general plan, and then followed in 1990, 2003, 2015, and then where we are today began in 2023, updating the Comprehensive Plan, which has been called Envision 2045. This slide shows you the different components of the Comprehensive Plan process. We started in early 2023 with a work, a scoping workshop to understand what worked with the Comprehensive Plan, what could be improved, and just finding out other ideas about how to move forward with this process. After that, in, in May of 2023, we brought a public participation plan to the Board, which was approved, and then from there, we started working on updating the data, gathering data, analyzing, and writing the plan. And then in July of 2024, the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group was, began meeting, and they met through August of 2025 to look at every single chapter, every goal and policy, and all the implementation plan items. We had the required 60-day review period, which is required by statute. That was from May 19th to July 18th of 2025. And then public hearings began with the Planning and Zoning Commission in September, and then tonight with the Board. So this is just in a very, pretty simplified version, the process of updating this plan. A few more details on public participation and outreach. We had a very detailed and extensive public participation plan, and these are just some of the components of what we conducted to implement that, that plan. And we started with intercept interviews. Those were one-on-one encounters with people, and we asked a short series of questions. We had focus groups, community events. We did a countywide survey, social media, mailers, mailing list, newsletters went out. We had articles that went out, both in newsletter form and also in the reported community. We had a radio interview, and so we estimate in total over 1,800 in-person contacts, and as well as what is seen on social media and other print media avenues. And again, the public participation and outreach was, we engaged throughout the entire process, and we, we finished up most recently with an open house prior to this meeting tonight. And so what we learned during all of the outreach was that there were three common themes as far as shared values. And this, this then led to an organization of the plan in turn to three main sections. And one is the quality of rural lifestyle, and we learned that county residents value a vibrant county economy with diverse accessible housing options that support the integrity and sustainability of the rural community lifestyle. We've also learned that being stewards of the natural environment and sustainability is important to our community, meaning we're stewards of the land and natural environment. And then lastly, diverse communities and services is also an important value to our community, meaning we're inclusive and respect and honor the diversity of our communities, people, land, and cultures through vibrant communities connected by partnerships and countywide services. So these, these common values then were translated into core planning priorities. And one of those, the first one, is to maintain the county's rural character and lifestyle by managing growth and development as strive to provide opportunities for economic vitality and resilience equitable, resilient, equitable, and accessible housing. The other, and the second priority is to protect the natural environment, water quality and supply, and to restore forest health. And then finally, to provide responsive public and emergency services and infrastructure to the county's diverse communities. And these next slides just have a summary of the goals and policies, and you've seen these before, but we'll, we'll just talk about them briefly again for people that are joining us tonight online. The rural lifestyle section includes three different chapters. Land use, growth, and development, circulation and transportation, and resilient economies and housing. And you can see at the bottom how many goals are associated with each chapter. And then the rural lifestyle value, as we've already seen, is valuing a vibrant economy, diverse accessible housing, to support the integrity and sustainability of our rural community lifestyle. And so then this first slide shows a summary of the policies in the land use, growth, and development chapter. And the policies do strive to locate higher density development near rural centers that have services and rural residential, maintain rural residential density where services are not available. It strives to locate regional, commercial uses, resort developments, industrial uses, again, in areas with access to public roads, utilities, and emergency services. It encourages using subdivisions over land divisions or lot splits. And it encourages promotion and conservation of large ranches to discourage land fragmentation and land use patterns. In other words, preserving those large ranches keeps intact our, our open spaces as well as habitat, and keeps the large ranchers viable and their, and their, the, the legacy of ranches continued into the future of the county. And then to also maintain federally owned or managed public lands as open space, which is another value, important value of this plan. The circulation and transportation chapter promotes coordinated transportation planning that minimizes environmental impacts and prioritizes safety. It looks to fund circulation improvements using developer contributions, ongoing support for existing and new funding sources, and forming improvement districts. It focuses, a lot of the policies focus on connectivity and access for safety and efficient circulation, and then as well promoting alternative modes of travel and multimodal opportunities. And that's a theme that we see throughout several chapters. The resilient economies and housing chapter looks to colla, promote collaboration to support business systems and opportunities, supporting access to education and skilled trade programs. The recent approval of the bond to expand CCC is in direct complement to this, this policy support. It supports infrastructure and programs to support businesses and ongoing ranching opportunities. And then finally, expand housing choices based on future studies and plans. The housing section of this is actually a new section for the, for the Comprehensive Plan, so the policies in there that are specific to housing are new in this plan for this, this update. Stewards of the natural environment, there are seven goals in the natural environment chapter, four goals in the parks, open space trails, and recreation chapter, five goals in the sustainability, resilience, energy, and climate, and then four goals in the water resources chapter. The policy focus for natural environment is to conserve and protect wildlife and wildlife movement corridors, riparian habitats, floodplains, and environmentally sensitive features. It addresses invasive and noxious weeds. It promotes forest restoration, provides education for property owners about firewise, USA, and other programs. And it also seeks to protect soils, air quality, scenic views, and dark skies. The focus, the policies for parks, recreation trails, and open space focus on seeking public input during park acquisition opportunities, looking at considering recreational needs during new development projects. It looks at the operation and management of parks to reduce primarily environmental impacts and other impacts during that operation management considerations. We look to coordinate trail planning that looks at connections, again, multimodal opportunities, and also looking to take advantage of opportunities to connect to the national trail systems that are within the county. It also recognizes the important economic benefits of recreation, and at the same time seeks to promote responsible tourism. The, this policy focus on sustainability, resilience, energy, and climate looks to promote best practices for sustainable and efficient buildings and energy efficiency. Their support for creating a county-specific, county-wide sustainability and resilience plan. And then it does look to, it does promote reducing greenhouse gas emissions and promoting carbon sequestration. And there was an example, I rather questioned last time about what is an example of carbon sequestration? We have a couple of companies working within the county on products that do promote either building materials or inert type of carbon sequestration, like that block that you see in the image below, or regenerative agriculture. Those are different ways that the county can support carbon sequestration. The water resources chapter promotes water sustainability, water, maintaining water quality, and then water conservation. There are policies that promote providing our residents with information about water supply, how to coordinate water programs, where they can go to find out information about water availability. It contains, the chart on the right shows water demand projections for the entire county based on the different groundwater basins that we have within, in Coconino County. And then there is support for creating a countywide water resources plan. And then the last section is diverse communities and services, and with, there are two chapters in this section. There's community services and public safety with 12 goals, and diverse cultures and community character with six goals. The community services and public safety is probably the largest chapter. There are a lot of different topics in there, everything from discussion on county facilities to libraries, schools, health and human services, emergency services, forest restoration, and public safety and law enforcement. So there, there's a wide variety of policy focus, and including promoting community connections and community hubs, promoting centralized wastewater systems where that's possible, looking to sharing costs of infrastructure for education and bus routes, preparing for public health emergencies, looking at continuing to expand utilities, broadband, and telecommunications, and making that available for new developments, and at the same time protecting scenic quality. The policies plan for adequate emergency services and also advocate for countywide fire-adapted communities, and possibly to adopt a wildland interface, urban interface code that would be specific to the county. It, it looks, it actually promotes locating development away from areas of natural hazards such as fault lines, and during the development review process is looking for any kind of possible hazardous materials production and identifying what those might be, so the county is aware of those. And then finally, looks to identify public safety issues and making sure that there are resources available for response times during development proposals. So really looking at public safety individually during development process and making sure that we have those services available. And then the last chapter is the diverse cultures and community character, which the design, rather, the, the policies promote design that continues to promote the county's rural character, culture, diversity, and minimize scenic impact. It promotes, again, that idea of community hubs and connections, which is something that we heard when we went out into the outreach with our communities. It looks to protect and preserve historic and cultural sites. It also promotes seeking input from Native American tribes to ensure that projects are culturally appropriate during development projects that may impact a nearby site. And then it also encourages incorporating a wide variety of perspectives, using public input during the development process. And so then this takes us to one of the, the last section of the plan is actually the implementation plan. We had 50 implementation items in that during the October work session with the Board. You all suggested adding another one, so there would be 51 implementation items. And the implementation plan is grouped into four different sections, the high priority, medium priority, and low priority action items. And you can see there's a proposed timeframe associated with each, and then also there are ongoing action items that are continuously implemented. And I won't go through each of these, but I did want to just show, these are the high priority action items. priority action items that we're showing on the screen. The numbers on the left don't necessarily mean a priority, it's just numbers for reference. And then in the plan itself, each of these are linked back to goals and policies, so you can reference back and forth either from the document, when you're reading a goal or policy, you'll see an implementation number, then you can jump to the implementation plan, and then vice versa. But just in terms of space, we, I didn't include that, those additional columns on this slide. You can see here then that number 12 would be the additional action item. If that was high priority action item that was suggested to be added, that would be work with internet service providers and granting authorities to advance the objectives of the Coconino County Strategic Broadband Plan to promote high-speed internet access to unserved and underserved populations. So that would be the additional implementation item that is in your attachment A. And that brings us to attachment A. And again, I won't go through each of these lines, but attachment A are changes that the Planning and Zoning Commission did review and recommend for adoption. And then there are, there's an explanation of what the commission recommended. And then we wanted to also show, though, that there was some change from, we have a recommended change from the planning commission's, recommended text regarding the note on terminology. So we can pause on that for a second, but we also wanted to give some time. There was a comment from the joint work session to include a paragraph and some information about all the changes that have occurred since 2015 regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, the recession, shutdown of Navajo Generating Station, drought, and fires. So there is, the suggested text is that line after item number five, and it's entitled influential events on the county's quality of life and resources. And so that paragraph would be included in the introduction of the plan, and the planning commission did review that and did recommend that that move forward to the board for consideration. The, the change, though, from what the planning commission reviewed is line six, and that is a note on terminology. And then note on terminology that was recommended by the planning commission is right under line six. And then we had legal staff help us, which was extremely helpful, to refine that and also make more, make some revisions to that text, which actually clarifies it pretty substantially. So I'll go ahead and read that. The, the change would be to this language, note on terminology. During the development of this plan, the county facilitated public participation and discussion on the preferred terminology to be used to refer to the original inhabitants of the county. For consistency with this feedback, when collectively referencing sovereign tribal nations, this plan uses the term Native American tribes or tribes. For all other references, the term indigenous is used. And then with that, we, we have already started looking through the plan and making those changes in terms of where the, wherever the term Native American, American Indian, other uses of that term is changed consistently to be either Native American tribe, or Native American tribe, tribe, or indigenous. So those will be the terms that will be used consistently throughout the plan, including in the goals and policies. And then, again, this is that final line item number seven, to add that additional high priority implementation strategy to promote the BEADS program. And so this is in your attachment A as well, just to document that change. This next slide is attachment A continued, which has items eight to 23, which are not substantive changes. These are corrections to text, data, formatting, adding photo captions. So there's a fairly long list here, but these are mainly, these are changes that don't change any of the substance or the meaning of the text, goals, or policies, but that need to be corrected. And so there are 23 of those, those edits. We, I did want to point out, the last item, number 23, were some clarifying comments from legal staff. And one of those, actually, we'll start with 21, because one of those was that in appendix three, there were several pages of information on Native American and Coconino County's indigenous peoples. And there's recommendation, because that information is not necessarily accurate or reflective of what each of those Native American tribes would want to see, so the recommendation was to remove that. There's a lot of information available in other places, but in order to be accurate and also respectful of what is, what is seen in this document, the recommendation was to remove that section from the appendix. We also had some recommendations, just to clarify the sections on tribal trust land, what actually that means, clarifying the section on the Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Act, just to clarify those sentences, and then just different groups that are discussed in the diverse cultures and community characters. So it cleans up and really tightens the text and makes it much more in line with what we'd want to put out there in terms of this type of document. And then finally, there is a policy that we have added some clarifying language to, and that is land use policy one. And you can see in the policy detail, it wasn't in the policy itself, but in the policy detail, this is about initiating early and continuous communication with all communities and Native American tribal governments, and how we do that. And so the communication with Native American tribal governments regarding project applications with an affiliation to those lands is integral to public participation, particularly when a proposed project may have an impact on land with tribal, cultural, religious, or historical ties. So that text in bold is what would be added to that policy detail. And then this takes us to attachment B. These are comments that we received, but that the planning commission reviewed and did not take any action or recommend any changes. But they're documented here for the record, and some of these comments came from the joint Planning and Zoning Commission and Board Supervisors Work Session on September 9th. And then we did have two letters from Citizen Sean Goleher, one received on September 30th and another on October 26th. And those letters were also attached in your packet. The commission did not receive those in time. Their meeting was on the 24th of September, so they did not review those. We did not recommend any, any action in regard to those letters. The next few slides, we'll just review very quickly the statutory requirements, because, again, this is a required, required for the county to have a comprehensive plan. And so you can see that every one of the nine chapters, almost every one of the nine chapters, is required in one way or another by statute. The diverse cultures and community character is optional for community character. But you can see there that every other chapter has some element of statutory requirements. And we won't look through this, but this is a, just a paraphrased version of statute. It's ARS 11-804, just to show the requirements that this plan must meet in order to be, to meet the statutory requirements. And then it does go onto two pages. So we obviously, it's primarily focused on land use, but we also have specific requirements to talk about standards for population density and intensity, that we have specific programs and policies to promote compact form development and locations where that should be encouraged. We have to consider air quality and access to incident solar energy. We need policies that address maintaining a broad variety of land uses. This, on this point, there is a chart in the plan, although the plan does not have a future land use map. We have land use categories that this bullet, that addresses this bullet point. And we need to identify sources of aggregates, and the plan does do that. It plans for circulation, it plans for water resources, and it plans for energy. That encourages and provides incentives for efficient use of energy, and we identify policies and practice, practices for the greater use of renewable energy. And this then brings us back to the comprehensive plan advisory group. The advisory group last met on August 7th and reviewed the 60-day review comments. They did recommend that the plan be forwarded to public hearing, and the public hearing draft does show, reflects the recommendations from the advisory group and their recommendation for approval. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on September 24th, and they as well recommended approval with the changes noted in attachment A as modified by the attachment A that you have in your packet. At the time that the report was prepared, we had no additional public comments on this And then this brings us to a recommended motion to approve this resolution. The resolution is attached, it's 25-63, to adopt case number PZAM25001, envision 2045, the updated Coconino County Comprehensive Plan, as modified with changes.
Wow.
We're happy to answer questions. I hope that was fast enough.
Wow, it's fabulous. And as everybody at the board here knows, this is a public hearing process, and we will open it for a public hearing. We will have an opportunity for the board to make comments, and for staff, if they would like to make, or people that are here to make comments before we take a formal vote on this. But before we open it for a public hearing, are there any questions that board members may have of Melissa or any of the staff here before we open this for public hearing? All right. If that isn't the case, we are now going to open this for public hearing. We, of course, are a reminder for speakers to state their name and their place of residence. And with that, I am going to turn this over to Lindsay Daly for her to advise the public on how they can be heard at the public hearing for the consideration and approval of the updated Coconino County Comprehensive Plan and the modifications set forth in amendment A, and the changes in recommendations from Planning and Zoning Commission. So with that, Lindsay.
Thank you, Chair Horseman. At this time, if there's anyone here that would like to provide comment for this item 19, public hearing item, we have comment cards by the door. There's not a whole lot of people here, so I'll note a call on some folk. Oh, you want others to go? Okay. Okay. And then if you're watching virtually on our stream, you can email a comment to boardcomments@coconinoaz.gov. We do have a comment card for Mr. Sean Goleher, but he would prefer to go at the end, so I'll go ahead. And Mr. Ruggles, would you like to come on up? And I'll set the clock for three minutes. If you can just state your name for our minutes, the light will turn green when the three minutes start, and then it'll turn red when the three minutes is up. Thank you.
Mr. Ruggles, always great to see you. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Hey, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm speaking to you as a civilian this evening now, but having had some experience with what we were talking about this evening, I'm gonna have to say that the 2015 plan, comp plan, was an award-winning plan. That happened back in 2017. The American Planning Association, the Arizona chapter awarded the county a very nice award for the plan back then. And what we have now is something that goes well beyond what we had in 2015. The plan is exceptional in terms of one thing that we did not have in 2015, and that was public input, input and outreach. I think it is far more representative of the values of the county than what we had. And what it took to get there is persistence, critical thinking, and heck of a lot more than that. And all that, I think, is exemplified by Melissa Shaw. And Melissa Shaw, I know, that I've had the opportunity to work with, and who put it all together. That's the persistence part. Critical thinking takes precedence after that, because that's what it takes to put all of the public comment together. I read the majority of what the public submitted for this plan, and that's why I say what we have right now is remarkable. And I think one other thing, it goes beyond what the legislature envisioned when they passed ARS 11-804 and 805, because the values part of it is what is so important to us in a plan like this. That is one thing that I think just simple legislation did not address. And in that respect, would be impossible to do better, and I think the recognition for that is entirely due to one person that I have had the pleasure of working with, and that is Melissa Shaw. So other than that, that's it. I want to be brief. Sometimes I know that's difficult, but anyway, what I have had to say is very heartfelt, and I hope that in your discussion, you will submit to approve the resolution that you have before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being with us, and thank you for all your hard work as well. And you kept it under three minutes, so thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here in the room that didn't fill out a comment card but would like to speak during this public hearing item? Hey, Mr. Sean Goleher, you're up next. If you can, I'll start the clock for three minutes, it'll turn green, and then when it turns red, the three minutes is up. If you can just please state your name for our minutes.
Okay, hold on a second, I'm gonna get this thing straight. Name's Sean Goleher, and my address is 813 West Coy Drive, Flagstaff, Arizona.
Thank you for being with us this evening.
And one correction, one correction. I did actually send in a letter back in late May, early June, when the first opening up on the comments, so there's an extra letter that wasn't included in your packet. And basically, I was just wondering why we didn't, I didn't get any response back by it on all my comments and proposals and memos. And if you guys want, I'm here to actually answer any of your questions or anything else. I will, I did some more research, especially with how the regulations are changing and how the feds are acting as of late. You could possibly lose about 10 to 20% of the federal funding, and if the state falls through, another 15 to 25% of the state funding. Also, you'd be having a lot of legal challenges still showing up due to the DEI, civil rights issues, the environmental issues, especially since all the regulations and laws are being changed recently by legislation, and as well as the housing issues. There's gonna be a lot of legal challenges to that, whether it's under civil rights or the, especially under the environmental issues. Is there any questions?
This is your time to speak.
No, I was wanting to know if you guys had any questions. Have you all read them or looked at them yet?
Sir, this is your time to speak.
Well, I was actually trying to find out if you guys wanted to know anything more.
Feel free to provide. You've got one minute and 23, 22, 21 seconds left.
Well, in that case, for Flagstaff, on another part of it, the education part, and for our economy, we should actually look at lobbying NAU to change its focus from where it is to actually switch to the space industry. That way, we can actually get high-tech jobs up here and start bringing in some of the big industries, like whether it's Westinghouse, General Electric, SpaceX, Virgin Airlines, so forth and so on, so we can start building future careers, not just doing hospitality and tourism. We need a diversifier economy so we have a robust economy. And there is some things I did like in the regional plan, like say, the community gardens and everything. You'll see that in some of my recommendations as well. The water part, I think it does not go far enough. Look up into primary water resources, because there are some, we have the geology for some actually good primary water resources, and we can actually pull it from the deep water that's three times more than what we have on top of the earth. There's many other aspects, and if you have any other questions in the future, please don't hesitate to contact me, because this is my wheelhouse. I can solve problems all day. I'd do that for the federal government. I'm done. I'm done.
Thank you, and you did it for three minutes, so appreciate that. Appreciate you being with us this evening. Anyone else to be heard on, on our comprehensive plan?
There's anyone else here in the room that would like to comment? Now's your chance to make your way up to the podium, or if you are watching virtually, And we do not have any other comments, Chair Horseman.
All right, we're gonna give it 30 more seconds. This is the last call for a very extensive overview and a very important document that's going to guide the future of Coconino County.
Chair Horseman, there is nothing in the inbox.
All right, very good. Wow, this is amazing. I am going to close the public hearing portion of this. And we're gonna go and forward and any comments or questions to the board? And I really want to make, I'm really excited about this, and so I have to make some comments here. You know, back in 2023, I gotta tell you, when we were talking about this, I was totally overwhelmed. It was such an incredible mammoth undertaking, and of course, the importance of it for the future here of Coconino County, the requirement for such an extensive outreach, and quite frankly, the extensive input we received from so many of our residents all across Coconino County, all coming together in recognition of this extremely special place. And I know at the very beginning, it says it's the most special place on earth, and I agree, it is the most special place on earth. And it was wondering, it was wonderful that so many people all across Coconino County saw it that way as, as well, and worked together to come together for a shared values and a shared vision of the future. And this vision of the future, these values will be guiding us here in the Board of Supervisors for the next decade. And, and I just am so pleased with the extensive project, and the results are absolutely stupendous. I, I think it's fabulous. And there are a lot of thanks to go around, and, and certainly, Mr. Ruggles, you're 100% right. Melissa Shaw, man, you just rocked it. And I really mean that. You know, having sat in on some of the public hearings, you know, your skill and ability to guide and oversee this process, the diversity of people, the diversity of thoughts and ideas that came forward, and your ability to basically bring it all together and, and to make sure everybody was heard was impressive, and I want you to know that. And you can't retire. It was really fabulous. And then Jess and Jay, and you know, certainly, Community Development, incredible job that you all did as well, spending many, many evenings out, working on bringing the information to the public, hearing back from the public. Rose and the advisory board, all of the members of that advisory board that spent so many hundreds of hours to get this comprehensive plan together, really impressive work. And of course, so many across all the departments in Coconino County. And I know at the very, very beginning of the comprehensive plan, there's a, but a very extensive list of the people that contributed, and a huge thanks to them.